Sorry it's late. Hi Chuck. Yeah, I'm pretty sure she was on vacation. Yeah, I think she was on vacation.
I like to call and order the Webster Planning Board meeting for May 19, 2025. I like to call the Webster Planning Board meeting for May 19, 2025. See the action items of the draft meeting minutes from April 28, 2025 and May 7, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, the minutes were distributed. Chuck had no comments and Kathy had no comments. I wasn't sure if others did or not, for both sides.
I didn't see any problem either. I'll make a motion to accept both minutes.
Second. Any objections? Hey, none. Let's go to the vote.
Aye.
All right, next item, request for de- completeness and release of peer review funds for Baton Street Solar, 7 Malden Drive, Assessor ID 10-A-29, Next Amp, applicant owner.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, the as-built plant had been submitted. Comments had been addressed. We had just been waiting for a signed license agreement for access to the swale for maintenance purposes. And wonder of wonder, it got signed. We have it in hand. And so now staff can recommend to you to vote to determine complete and accept the as-built plan and release the peer review funds.
All right. Do we ask for any questions in the audience, or is anybody here from Baton Street?
No, typically, action items. You don't, it's accurate discretion, but this is just a straight-up action item.
So, make a motion?
I'll make a motion. It is just for the determination of completeness?
Determinate, yeah, determination of completeness and release of peer review funds.
All right, I'll make a motion to determine the Baton Street solar project complete. So allow for the release of peer review funds.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item, approval not required under subdivision law A and R plan, 25 Jackson Road, Assessor ID 39-D-8-6, Michael and Barbara Hopkins, owner applicant.
Mr. Chairman, the plan in front of you indicates that this lot into two lots. We have, I met with the applicant, we went through the list of requirements. It meets all the requirements, so staff is recommending that you endorse and have staff sign. In addition, they have asked for a waiver from the regulations. This is coming in at one inch equals 20 feet. They require one inch equals 40 feet for the purposes of getting the material on the page. It's not unusual.
I'll make a motion to accept the A and R plan for 25 Jackson Road.
And waiver?
And the waiver, as well.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions out there?
Nope. Comes from a good young man. Good job, Mike.
Next time, send Barbara in.
Right, item D, request for determination, or a change of use in site plan requirement, 75 Main Street, Assessor ID 1-C-9-0, Putnam Investment Owner.
Mr. Chairman, I know that the applicants here, I'm going to give you a quick rundown of what this is all about. As you know, your bylaw requires whenever there's a change of use, that site plan review be come before the board. What we've got here, as you can tell, I'll put on the aerial, is, I do believe, and the applicant can correct me. I do believe there is a retail store in there now, is on its way out. And they want to replace the use with something different. A grocery store and a small coffee shop. So, in the past, you have taken under consideration whether or not site plan should or should not be required. In this particular case, the most looming issue obviously is parking. The applicant has submitted a letter which does an outline of the number of spaces required. And the applicant, I do believe, is here and can speak to the matter. So, what they're asking tonight from you is a determination of whether or not site plan process needs to be initiated. Turn on the microphone, please. Thank you.
And then, your name and address, your name and address?
Robert Putnam, and my home address, or you're in Webster. 75 Main Street is the property. So I do have a, just a plan that I did up quick to show you guys where the parking spaces are located now. I only have one copy of my copy of this. So you can see, back, and then there's two additional spots here.
Where's that liquor store?
Correct, correct, right. So our property line kind of goes through the parking spaces.
So you split them up with them?
Exactly, exactly. We get two, they get two. And then there's, if we do compact parking out back, we have space for seven, plus a spot for a dumpster. And then across the street there, I think there's six spaces as well.
Across the main street, or?
Correct, yep.
Is there any off-street parking there?
Say again?
Is there any off-street parking?
Yes.
Or, I'm sorry, on-street parking?
On-street parking, across the street, on the opposite side.
Oh, I see spaces there now, yeah.
Okay.
Where they tore down those old buildings?
Correct. There's, there are other off-street, on-street parking in front of, in front of the pizza place. But I'm just trying to get it a little bit closer to the, you know, for reference, a little bit closer to our store.
So the on-street parking in that area, if I'm not mistaken, is two-hour parking area, which would be fine for customers. The staff will have to figure something out.
So how many other you required to have?
You could ask me that. That was in his letter. He did pull that all out correctly. Do you remember roughly what, what numbers required?
I think it's 10, because I want to say we were too short.
Yeah, that sounded, that sounded right to me.
The square foot of the retail space that they're going to be utilizing inside the building, we're going to need, I believe it was 10, that included the employees. And we have seven, seven out back, or six out back, again, depending on the size. If we go compact, I think we can get seven out back, and two on the side, so that's nine. We're literally one short. And like I said, across the street, there's, there's six other spots available.
Where will your employees park? Will they be parking, taking up those spaces?
If they were my employees, I'd have them park across the street to utilize the space for the customers.
Okay.
The parking across the street is short-term parking, though. They'll get ticketed and towed by the police.
It's going to be a market slash coffee, pastries, things of that nature. So, in and out, they're probably maybe 15 minutes at the most, I'm thinking. So, yeah, it would be, most of it would be short-term parking.
How many employees do you think?
I believe they anticipate running it with two. I think when they first start, they're going to start off with three, just, just because of the rush that's probably going to be there. But I think they're, they're anticipating two employees, one doing the food prep, and then the other one running the convenience area.
Is there a lot of parking congestion in that area now?
Out back, no, there's not, because it's just our lot. The liquor store, I would say the only congestion, because the nail salon is not open on Sundays. So that frees up the whole side of our building, which was nice, because we had the, we had the store that was there that just closed. Across the street, no one, nobody uses those spots. So those spots are very rarely ever utilized. So they're, they're almost always open. When we had, when we were doing our projects at night, it was nice because the nail salon was closed across the street. We utilized them all. We utilized the spots out back. But yeah, there's, there's, there's no, other than, you know, and again, the, the, not the convenience store, the package store, they're in and out. So it's, they, they, they are even faster. I bet you they're in and out in two minutes.
And there's no parking on that other small street?
On Pleasant Street?
Yeah.
No, it's just the sidewalk.
What was there before?
Like, just, they just moved out, it was Burlaf to Boards. It was like a, it was like a home to course.
Yeah, like a gift shop, like a gift shop type thing.
I'll see what we would change with the site plan. Otherwise, we'd be, we can get huge modifications to the building, and I think what's there is...
Yeah.
I'd agree with that.
What?
I'd agree with that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, if I wouldn't, if you don't mind, and I've spoken to the owner, and I have absolutely no reason to believe that this area won't be adequately striped and dumpster won't be in place prior to the opening. But I would recommend, for the sake of argument, that, that you condition, if you're going to, if you're going to waive site plan review and be on the condition that, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, that staff goes down to see how this parking area has been striped, to make sure it meets the town standards and that a dumpster is actually in place.
Deal with that?
Yeah, good point.
So that's my recommendation.
I already have a company lined up to do the striping. It was just a matter of, are we going to go nine feet or eight feet for the compact cars? And I think being out back there, I think, I would, I personally believe the compact sizes, plus it allows us to get one extra spot doing the compact, plus having the dumpster there, so.
Yeah. All right, so...
Maybe we'll ask, was there any other public comment?
Hey, does public have any comments? Anybody here have any comments on this? All right, so make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the change in use and waiver of site plan requirement contingent, conditioned upon the town's review of the parking, striping, that it meets the town's parking requirements, and also the placement of a dumpster.
And before?
And I'll second it. Good job.
Just a quick question. Do you want the actual dumpster there, or just the designated spot for where the dumpster's going to go? Just so I can let the, let the lieutenant know?
I think just if it's designated, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
As long as there's a spot, we're good.
Yeah.
Perfect.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All set. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Should we go to the public hearing, or do the draft decision?
That's entirely up to you. If you wanted, you do the decision last. I've got some updates on your, your hearings here, if you'd like.
Yeah, let's do the, let's do the public hearings.
Okay, another request for continuance came in for 415 to 430 something, Main Street, 443 South Main Street. They are going to conservation on June 9, and that's going to necessitate some changes to their plan. So they've asked to continue till your next meeting, which is at the end of June. And you would need to vote, actually, you don't even need to vote it, because you've never opened it up.
Okay. So we'll just continue that? That's the one for signage?
Signage and full tear down of what's across the street.
Oh, okay.
So, that can be, if you so desire to, I think your meeting is June 30.
All right, so do the next one. Modification of a definitive plan approval, Camille Road, Sutton Road Estates, waiver request from section IV.D-5C, Dead End Street Turnaround. Matt Capella, applicant Henry J. Capetelli, Company Incorporated, owner, continued from 324 to 25.
I don't know if Matt is here tonight. Is he here? I don't think he is. So I did email him. As you recall, you had a public hearing last year on two waiver requests. You granted one, the length of Dead End Street. This is for the design of the end of the roadway. We've received nothing. We've had no response from email. Somebody has purchased the property at the end of the road, and in theory is working with Matt to develop an acceptable turnaround. But it's nowhere near ready for acceptance by this board. And because the time involved with how long it's been since you opened a public hearing, the butters lists have changed. And you no longer have, with Paul's absence, you no longer have voting requirements to take action. So my recommendation would be to deny it without prejudice, which allows him to come back and restart the process when he's ready.
All right. So do you, would you want us to vote on denial without prejudice, or do you want to draft a decision?
I would just say deny it without prejudice for failure to advance the application.
Yeah, you're close, public hearing.
Yeah.
You have to close the hearing, yeah.
So make a motion to close, well, I'll have to, closing the public hearing.
So moved.
I'm in favor as well.
Somebody else asked a motion, I can't do it.
Who's the second? Mike.
Thanks, Dan.
Did you vote?
No. Of the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
So the question now is, do you want me to draft a full-blown decision which outlines the process, which is not a big deal, you know? Or it can, I can outline the process and provide the necessary information to the clerk in a memo. It's entirely up to you.
Seems like more work if you, if you draft the decision. I think if we just said for the reasons presented tonight, we make a motion to deny the...
The waiver.
Yeah, deny, deny the modification of...
Oh, yeah.
Of a definitive plan approval for Camille Road without prejudice.
And to submit memo to town clerk?
Yeah, to submit a memo to town clerk, stating such.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That way they can start up with all the people and all that.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll have a full-blown memo, ready.
All right, public meeting, site plan application, 5 Linwood Street, two duplexes on one lot. Waiver request from section IV.D-5C, Dead End Street Turnaround.
No, no, Joe, I'm sorry. There was a revised, there was a revised... Sorry, revised, agenda went out when that got caught. But, do you have the, did I print the new, the new one for you? The new agenda? And there's a, and there is a public meeting notice that needs to be read as well.
This is the right one here.
Okay, so...
In accordance with the provisions of the Webster zoning bylaw, section 650-56, the Webster Planning Board will hold a public meeting on a site plan approval application for duplexes on a single lot located at 5 Linwood Street, Assessor ID 13-J-18-0. Application was submitted by All-Star Home LLC, 3 Henry Street, Webster Mask, applicant owner. Said site is located in a multifamily residential MFR zoning district. Do you have some comments? Does your name and address?
Yes, for the record, I'm Robert Duff, Core Engineering. For the engineers for the applicant, Greg.
Could you just please speak into the microphone?
Excuse me, yeah, we're, again, Robert Duff, for the record, Core Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Greg Kunksky, back there with his wife. Very simple project. We got two, two duplexes, two-unit duplexes on a lot on 5 Linwood Street in town. We submitted April, I think the 21st on this. We, it's a simple project. I don't know if you have viewed it. But they, two units, identical, two driveways. And that's, that's about it. We're going to have municipal water and sewer. So, not much else to it. Terms of that, we are going to submit a, submit a waiver request. We're going to have to follow up with this project, obviously, because we have to do a stormwater management report.
Yeah.
I apologize again.
You need a waiver for what?
Well, we've got a couple of requirements in the site plan submission package, i.e. a comprehensive traffic plan and such. We want to request a waiver from that, waiver from the traffic count. And there was a third item we were going to grab a waiver from, but we have not submitted that form. We did the board at this time, so.
So I hear that you need it, you're, you're looking for continuation, then?
Yeah, we would have to at this time, because we're going to go to the site, we needed, we weren't, oh. First, we did not believe we had to form a stormwater management. We had to file the, for that, and we do. So we're going to have to modify the plans a little bit. So we're not really complete at this time, so.
So what's that, in the back of the middle?
That, that round thing is just a temporary stockpile area. We located on the plan.
Mr. Chairman, I, I had had, I'd had conversations with Chuck, who I'll let speak to it in a second. And I know that they're working on some changes to this plan based on the April 28th engineering review. So, in terms of the waivers that are being requested, right now, quite a few of the criteria for site plan are not addressed on this plan. So I know they're working up some revisions.
Chuck, you had some comments on this?
No, I think, I think Ann really summarized it pretty well. We really, you know, I, I talked to Bob and, and I, we're waiting to do a full engineering review until they submit the, the site plan information and stormwater information. and stormwater information.
Actually, I was thinking, Mr. Chairman, you might want to point Brian Shaw to this as well because it's been opened.
Actually, Mr. Shaw is only eligible to vote on special permits, but Kathy Cody, because this only requires three votes.
Okay.
And Kathy Cody can certainly mull in on this.
Okay. Only special permits?
Only on special permits.
Oh, I didn't know that.
They're, they're working to change that law at the state, which means, you know, we'll all be long gone by the time that comes around.
I think I was an associate voting on everything.
We didn't record all those votes.
So we need, were we making motions to continue it? So we give a full plan?
We'll find out if the applicant would like the June meeting and then you can continue it to that.
Yeah, we would.
So it'll be good?
Would like that, please.
Alright.
We apologize, we wanna, we kinda, we wish we had a little bit more preparation on the decision, but
It's alright.
Some of the things that she related to our minor. So we just matter adding from those and stuff to cover those requirements.
Yep. And we'd like to have the engineer look at the full plan.
Yeah, correct. I worked, I worked with Chuck on it when I was at a different company, 50 Cudworth Road. At the Pioneer Seal Coating Company then. Actually, they started to build, actually. So I was here about a year and a half ago, so.
Alright, I'll make a motion to continue the site plan application for 5 Linwood to June 30th at 6:30 PM.
I'll second it.
Hold the waiver?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Alright, draft decision?
Last, last but not least, the draft decision for Cure Relief. I'm looking over, because this is a modification of a special permit. We, you will need all four votes. All four of you who were, if they're eligible to vote, were present at the hearing, so you're all eligible. Jason had provided some edits, which are back in the conditions, starting at condition four. I had a couple of questions for Jason. And I'll pull it up on the screen because my eyesight just can't follow.
Yeah, I can take the board through my thought process with the conditions.
Yeah, I, I think we went through the decision at the last meeting. But we were waiting on the material in red, I mean, in in yellow that you see here under the conditions and we can go from there. And Jason, I, I installed the conditions based on the order of the way things flow.
That's how I tried to present it. So, we start with the first yellow one. And what I, what I did is I went through the minutes and also the application, the applicant. The application, and I tried to codify things that were recorded into the application because research and, they're actually called research projects in the state regs. They don't say research and development. It allows for a lot of different things. And I think with all the issues in public hearings about the odor, I think it's wise to only grant what the applicant asks for and nothing more. So that, you know, so that they can't have a regulation change and then the use of the building can get shifted from what they said being product packaging and infusion, flavor infusion product research turned into something that we may not want. My big concern, which I raised last meeting, was animal testing, which is allowed under the regulations. Something that I personally would be against. So, the first thing, what they said, if you look at condition four, they, their attorney stated that they were going to reduce their manufacturing size by 2,200 square feet. So that's just codification of what they represented. They're gonna reduce that grow area. As far as.
Jason, actually, that was, in that particular one, item four, I had two questions. They must reduce its existing, isn't it the, the grow canopy? They're reducing the gross.
Mr. Adamopolis, he said canopy size.
Okay.
In his in his application.
I mentioned grow rooms at one point.
So grow rooms, he used canopy size. I said marijuana manufacturing capacity. I think, you know, that's, I mean, we could define it, if you can come define it a different way. You know, manufacturing usually means something that you're selling or making for sale. You know, I guess it would be up to the, you know, us to the side, you know, what that could mean, but.
And not a shipping room or a storage room.
Right, so.
I think maybe the right term there would be cultivation.
Cultivation?
That would be, that would be the growing and.
Okay, so we said, we could say.
The growth process of, of, of the plan itself. Opposed to manufacturing seems more of like building, constructing, like the components of the packaging. So I just think.
So we could say, so we could say growing, what?
Or cultivation.
Yeah, cultivation.
Growing and cultivation?
Right, instead of, instead of manufacturing.
So we could say canopy size and we could say marijuana growing in cultivation capacity?
I think that's.
Slash, maybe both words.
So, canopies, we switched that to marijuana growing in cultivation?
Capacity, yeah.
Uh, no, it would be canopy size and it says, i.e., it would be marijuana growing in cultivation capacity. I'm not, I'm not a marijuana expert, so I did the best I could with this. So the next point is the inverse of that, which because they asserted that they're gonna transform these rooms that this 2,200 square feet into a research area. So that's, limits their research area to 2,200 square feet.
Did you want to clarify that as marijuana research? Because I think that's what they.
Yeah, you could, okay, we could say marijuana research.
Yeah.
Those are my only ones.
Yeah, definitions can be, if you look at the regulations, they use marijuana, cannabis.
Yeah.
Interchangeable, kind of, I should note it's being a word, being a contract person.
But yeah, you don't want to leave research, you don't want to leave that open.
But we, well, research is defined. Research is, is defined, that is a defined term in mass regs. Number six. That just codifies what they ask for, product packaging and flavor infusion products. Neither of those are defined. It's not a listed use. I suppose it could be, it's a subset within the industry, I'm assuming. Then it forbids any other uses that could be allowed under Massachusetts or federal law. Kind of foresight, you know, if you know, one of the things you do in contracts or patent or writing is you look forward. You know, although we're not, marijuana's not legalized under federal law yet. It may be, so this kind of helps us protect us into the future. By, by not allowing one of those uses if federal law does approve it. So product packaging. I just, that's, try to define real quickly what product packaging includes. So design, safety, environmental stability of the packaging materials and environmental stability of the products. Pretty much puts a definition into what they represented, represented.
That's what he said.
Next thing would be, you know, they assert that there'd be no marijuana. The Delta 9 tetra hydrocannabinol, that's the active ingredient that gets you high in marijuana. So I specifically stated that, that can't be. Then further with a catch-all that says, they can't add anything that's gonna have a, get somebody high. You know, have an adverse effect, you know? Natural or synthetic. And then stating that they can't do anything with these products after they're, they're used for research purposes. So they can't sell it, they can't distribute it. It's gotta be destroyed. That's kind of the industry, that's kind of the standard in the medical industry. If you make drugs, do a drug trial without, while it's in the trial phrases, you have to destroy all the products. So that just incorporates that part into this. Same kind of terms for flavor infusion. They stated that they weren't using any THC in their flavor infusion. The first part just defines what a flavor infusion is. Natural or synthetic chemicals designed for taste, texture, and ingestion of a subsequent product. Subsequent product would be the marijuana, but they're not doing, or they stayed, stayed, they're not doing testing with the flavor infusions with the marijuana as part of their research projects. B and C are just, are the same as B and C for product packaging. That are listed above. The reason I listed those twice is that it, it just closes a loophole. So an attorney can't come back and say, well, you, you know, you stated it there. But if you say them both places, then it's clear. Second part would be consumption by human test subjects. It only allows for consumption of flavor infusion products. They can't, these flavor infusions, just reiterate, they can't contain THC. And they can't contain, the last part is, there can't be any ingredient that has a psychological, physiological, or behavioral effect, aka getting them high. So we can't get people, that's, that's what they asserted before us. The second part, animal testing, pretty inclusive. Animals defined as anything but a human being or a plant. So that allows them to do their human testing, but we can't test dogs, monkeys, rats, or anything else. And then just some items to further, further restrict. So there's, just to close off any loopholes that a, that an attorney might try to exploit. And the last thing, number 11. That's kind of codifies what we've had a number of public hearings on, was the odor. So I, I asked for, or the, or looked at the 2020 site plan review decision. And the only conditions in that site plan review related to parking, oddly enough. And parking is something they're asking for a waiver for and it's not really a concern. I think that's basically just a feel-good condition that, you know, puts it on paper that they're to implement the best practices and technology to mitigate and reduce any odors. So it's there. You know, at least we can point to it, say, well, that's something that if you, if they filed this decision that they've agreed to. So I know it's, it's wordy, it seems, you know, fairly extensive, but I really don't want to rehash our, have more hearings on odor and expansion of uses that we didn't intend originally, so. I can now try to answer any questions.
It was good. I just, I have one just concern about, under prohibition of animal testing, about the word plant. And how that affects their permit for what they're testing under this, under their umbrella of their, their permit that they're asking for.
Well, marijuana is a plant.
Right. So I'm just, I'm just concerned that if we limit them, it could, they could get their permit but not be able to.
Well, they just, they can test on a human. I guess if you want to do plant-to-plant testing, a plant's not an animal. So you could do.
I just know that, because, I mean, I'm not, I'm not an expert either. I just know that they have different, like, the ways that they, you know, combine the plants together, or they meet the plants.
Well, you could do plant-to-plant testing, a plant's not an animal.
Right.
I see a possible loophole that I think might be worth pointing out. There are non-psychoactive components of marijuana. You can add that on their own to, to anything, but can cause the effects to be strengthened. Things like CBD would not be covered by this writing, but when combined with THC could cause an additional effect. So while they wouldn't be able to test that on its own, this would allow them to add it as a flavor that would then make it a stronger high in potential.
Say, say that again?
So there, there are components.
Okay, so there's CBD, you don't have to interrupt.
CBD is one I've heard of. I think there are other ones like that, that on their own don't do anything, but when combined with THC, I think there's, CBG is another one, have added effects. The way this is written, technically on their own, they don't do anything. But if they are later combined with THC, could cause something? I don't know how that would be covered by.
Yeah, so I mean, you could always state that. So what I did is I, in legal terminology, there's things called catchalls. So if you look at, I'll take 8B for example. Flavor infusion products may not contain any natural chemical, synthetic chemical, or a combination thereof that is designed to or has a psychological, physiological, or behavioral effect. That is kind of tried to say, okay, you can't, any, you can't, any chemicals or combinations of them that are gonna have one of those effects. Trying to be, like I said, as broad as I.
All inclusive.
All, as inclusive. You know, I, but I would agree, it's always best to list the chemicals if you can. I don't know if we want to add more work and add CBD to our list. We could always say THC comma or CBD.
Yeah, I, I don't want to have an extensive list for that without doing research into it. I don't know if there's more of a catch-all for THC or THC enhancers.
Yeah, well, it's gotta be either a synthetic or a natural chemical. There's, there's nothing. Either it's man-made or it's exist in nature, I suppose.
Yeah, and this gets psychological. Right, it says behavioral effects. So that should catch CBD, anything that's effective, right?
And I suppose if there's a challenge or if there's an issue, it would be us to or be backup for the board to say, well, is that a synthetic or a natural chemical? Like I said, it's, you know, it's difficult. There's always, that, that's what the attorney's job is to do, is to put bullet holes through it. But I think that it does it does incorporate, at least in my mind, it would.
I think pulls, pulls everything together pretty well.
And like I said, if they're not happy, they can always come back.
I'm surprised he's not here.
I did let him know.
Yeah, very surprised.
But he, he can't provide you with any input at this point.
Yeah, they can't say anything anyway.
But he's getting what he asked for. I will say that. He asked for two things.
I think it covers us and it's, these requirements.
Right.
Alright, so we start with the findings of fact. So we're gonna do F1 through F10.
F1 through F10, yeah.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve F1 through F10.
I'll second it.
Hold the waiver?
Aye.
Aye.
You have one waiver from site plan review, which was discussed extensively under finding F5, which is referenced in the draft decision. You can either make additional findings or you can go ahead and just make the motion as presented.
I think the waiver was only for, what, parking? Parking, which was, oddly enough, was conditioned in the first.
Well, it's for all site plan requirements, so it's not just. Well, it's for all site plan requirements, so it's not just parking.
Okay. I'd make a motion to grant the waiver requests for the site plan requirements, seeing that there's no exterior changes proposed to the building, just interior, interior uses.
I'll second it.
Hold the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, under specific findings.
Do you want to do a roll call on that waiver?
Oh, yeah. You want to do roll call?
That's what it has on here, so.
All right, I'll call the roll. Mr. Dassler?
Yes.
Mr. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
So the numbering, once again, my classic move, is now F11, not F10. And this is specific, stating that the conversion of two grow and cultivation rooms to marijuana research room does or does not significantly deviate from the intent and purpose of the originally approved special permit and site plan. There's room for you to make a finding, or you can vote as you see fit.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the modification of the site plan for 30 Worcester Road.
I'll second it.
Wait a minute, you're going to do finding F11?
Oh, finding F11. Yeah, I'll find it. Does not significantly deviate from the intent and purpose of the original site plan, because this all pertains to marijuana manufacturing. And all we're doing is going from a commercial use to a research use.
I'll second that motion.
Hold the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Now, are you at your motion to approve with conditions or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the conditions as presented.
Site plan and special permit? Because this is a special permit.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan and special permit with the conditions as presented.
And direct staff to sign.
Well, you'll do that next.
I'll do that next, yeah.
I'll second it.
Hold the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Last but not least, I'll direct, or make a motion to authorize Ms. Morgan to sign the decision on our behalf.
Second it.
Hold the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And that is the end of your formal agenda, except for...
Engineering updates?
Engineering updates.
I, I don't think I have any updates, and I know that you get chastised for talking about things that are not on the agenda, so I'm not sure. I can't, I can't think of anything.
Is there anything you'd like on the next agenda for an update?
We didn't get something on the high school. Wait, there's a website? No, I'm going to check it out.
Needle disposal? I thought we were going to have an update on that. You said that you were going to have an update on that for us, based on...
Yes, there is, there is an update on United Medical Waste.
Go ahead.
So I'll, I'll fill in for Coffee here. So they, they do need to finish their ASBIL plan and come back, you know, request condition of completeness from the board. So they, they have been notified that they need to do that, and it's my understanding that they're working on that.
Okay. Because it looks like it's already being used, the property itself, by the amount of trails that I've seen in the lot itself.
Yes.
We did discover, he did have in his possession a certificate of occupancy that was issued by the previous building commissioner. That certificate was never entered into the system, so staff did not know that had been issued. So he does have that. He's aware of the fact that he kind of jumped the process on this, and he's working to get it done.
Any new updates on the marijuana place on Cutworth Road?
I did see, I did see that they had some Erosch controls up, and it looked like they were maybe doing some plantings and things. I didn't, I kind of did a drive-by, and I didn't, but I didn't see any modifications to the building or to the handicapped areas of the parking lot. So I don't know, they could be working on that. I'm not sure, but I didn't see any signs of that.
Okay. One, one last thing. The asphalt place on Cutworth Road, are they in the process of putting up a building right now?
So they did, they did their underground stormwater that we took a look at when they excavated for that. And yeah, I would, I have not been by there recently, but I would tend to think that, you know, they're moving forward with the, the site design, so.
Okay.
Or the site construction, I should say.
I haven't seen anything done over there.
Looks like they've done some of the work.
Yeah, I've seen some.
You know, prep work for the, for the area, but I haven't seen any building materials going up or anything.
Yeah, just storage and stuff, it looks like.
Yeah.
Boxes, trucks with trailer boxes there.
Yeah, yeah. Trying to think of certain elements. No, that's it for me. I'll make a motion to adjourn. 7:22?
Want me to second, or? I'll second.
Hold the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Microphones, please.